I think more will come at seven.
Yeah.
Yeah, let me go ahead.
You go ahead.
I think we're ready. When do you start?
Are you ready? Okay. Sounds good. All right. Good evening. Good evening, everyone. My name is Qassem Rashid. I'm the president of the Muslim Law Student Association here at the University of Richmond School of Law. I want to start by thanking each and every single one of you for taking the time out of your evening tonight to come. I know everyone has a lot of commitments, and we appreciate you giving due importance to this very important topic. You are in for a treat, as we have an esteemed panel that will no doubt offer some great perspectives. I want to also recognize just a few people on the Muslim Law Student Association Board: Miriam Durani standing in the back there, Rizwan Al-Jibedin, and Fatma Munis. So before I begin, I just wanted to go over the basic structure that Ambassador Bell's going to go into in a bit more detail. After the Q&amp;A session is done, there will be a brief reception with a few light refreshments out back, so we encourage you to stick around, ask the questions that you couldn't. But just in short, thank you again for coming, and I'll ask Ambassador Bell to come up and give his introductory remarks. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you all for being here. This is a production with many sponsoring and stakeholding organizations and persons. The two organizations on the front of your program are the First Freedom Center and Karama, but of course, we're very thankful to the University of Richmond, to this fine law school, which Dr. Al-Hibri herself graces as a professor. But there are community institutions here, and there are representatives of other universities as well. And I always risk failing to recognize someone on these occasions, but I would like to talk to the presence of three people: the chairman of our board, Dr. E. Ben Howerton; the member of our board who sees after our finances, Mr. Roger Bavet; and we're also gratified to have Professor Isabel Richmond here this evening, who was a member of the First Freedom Center staff for many years and has worked closely with Karama. So these and many other people have helped to make this possible, and we thank everyone for being here. The organization of the evening: first, it'll be best organized if you join me in extinguishing yourself out. And secondly, just let me outline the course of events. I will introduce our speakers, including very briefly myself. Each of us will spend about 10 minutes making a short presentation. I will then moderate a question-and-answer period from the floor. When that occurs, we ask that you use the microphone situated in the aisle and not pose your questions outside the hearing range of the microphone, so that we can capture that for everybody. Questions should be brief. Questions, not statements. This is an evening about rights. It's an evening about the U.S. Constitution and about law. It's not an evening about politics, so we would hope none of us have to make any political statements at this juncture. Our first speaker this evening will be Dr. Aziza Al-Hibri, who is a professor at the T.C. Williams Law School here. On June 7th of this year, President Obama appointed Dr. Al-Hibri to the U.S. Commission on International Religious Freedom. That's an independent bipartisan U.S. federal government commission that makes recommendations to the president, to the Congress, to the State Department, to the National Security Council about the state of religious freedom in the world and how the United States can help to promote religious freedom. She is founder and chair of Karama, a nonprofit organization dedicated to contributing to the understanding and promotion of human rights worldwide through education, legal outreach, and advocacy. She is a former professor of philosophy and founding editor of Hipatia, a journal of feminist philosophy, and is also the recipient of the First Freedom Award from my own organization. And during the past 20 years, has written extensively on Muslim women's rights, Islam and democracy, and human rights in Islam. She has published widely in law journals and other legal publications, lectured extensively within the United States, Europe, and the Muslim world universities. So we're very pleased to have Bledh this evening in such competent hands. Tommy Bayer, born in Berlin, a U.S. citizen who with his family was able to escape Nazi Germany and the Holocaust with his parents, settled first in Newport News and then in Richmond. He attended this university as an undergraduate, graduating with distinction, elected president of his senior class, tapped into four honorary societies, including Phi Beta Kappa. He received his law degree from the Georgetown Law Center and was a member of the Law Review there. After serving one year as a law clerk to a U.S. district judge, he was appointed Assistant Attorney General of the United States by Attorney General Robert Kennedy, existing United States attorney, by Attorney General Robert Kennedy. In private practice for more than 40 years, he has attained a distinguished reputation as an advocate and as a protector of newcomers to this country. He has held office in the Virginia State Bar and in the Richmond Bar Association. His many community and national activities have encompassed the presidency of Bene Brith, in which capacity he met with heads of state, ambassadors, and other foreign leaders of over 135 countries. He served for 10 years as chair of the board of the First Freedom Center. I am a local boy who went to William &amp; Mary thereafter after Cambridge University. I spent 31 years in the American Foreign Service, working on European affairs, Soviet affairs, in many of those capacities, human rights affairs, focusing frequently on the circumstances of religious minorities, including in authoritarian countries. I last served as an ambassador-at-large, working on the enlargement of NATO, and my special beat there was human rights, civilian control of military, and coming to terms with the Nazi and communist paths of countries aspiring to membership in NATO. Since coming back to Richmond, I have headed the World Affairs Council for some years and been on the board of the First Freedom Center since 2004. So enough about us. I'll ask Dr. Al-Hibri pleased to make the first presentation.
Thank you very much for your introduction, and I thank the First Freedom Center and my colleagues for their support on this very critical issue. It's a national issue, as you all know. And if I were to forget that I'm a Muslim and sit back and read the newspapers and read about Sharia, it's going to scare the heck out of me. I don't want that thing called Sharia, which is oppressive to women, which is violent, which, you know, you can fill in the blanks. And now it's taking over the United States courts. What is happening in this country? I think these are the images that are scaring people in the United States, and I think it's time for a serious conversation, because this kind of misinformation affects my civil rights, my constitutional rights, and those of other Muslims. I understand my religion, and I'd like to share it with you, and I am sure that all of us are committed to this constitution, which says that, as a Muslim, I have a place at the American table like everybody else. This is the compact that we have all agreed upon in terms of religious freedom. Sometimes, walking on campus, I take a look at the historical Baptist society, and I think, "Am I going to be the new Baptist?" I've seen, if you ever get a chance to go look at that historical society, see the travails and suffering that Baptists went through at a certain part of American history. And now we have a constitution that is supposed to protect us from all these things. So in order to start this conversation, I want to first ask, what is Sharia? The word Sharia in Arabic just means "a path." Some Arabic dictionaries say it's "a path to water." So when you put it in the religious context, what we're talking about is a path to a society which is fair and just. How does that path develop? Based on religion, what we are talking about is a set of laws that would bring order into society and make it fair and just. The core of Islamic worldview is justice, and it is not any kind of justice. It's restorative justice. It's a justice which is combined with mercy and forgiveness. That's the highest level of justice that Islam talks about. As you know, that is not very different from what Judaism or Christianity talk about, and that does not surprise us, because Islam is an Abrahamic religion, and we look at the other religions as similar to ours. We all worship the same God. Don't be confused by the word Allah. In the Middle East, in the Arab world, Christians and Jews also pray to Allah, because the word Allah means "God." There's no secret in that. So the Sharia is basically a set of laws that are intended to make our human life moral. Think of it as including the Ten Commandments. How scary is that? How you deal with your neighbor? How you deal with each other on your daily affairs? So how does that happen to be involved in the United States and in American courts? Well, there are several ways. One of them is, for example, contract law. Sometimes, there are financial contracts, and these could involve Islamic law, mainly because we deal with Islamic countries that have their own laws. And by the way, when we talk about the law of a Muslim country, it does not mean we're talking about Sharia. There is a difference between religious law and the law of the country, because the law of the country is an interpretation of the Sharia, through the lens of that country's culture and understanding of what the Quran says. And actually, that is not a real problem. To the contrary, in the Quran, there is a verse, which is very well-known, that encourages diversity in Islam. Islam did not come to make all societies look like one. It tells us that God created us, male and female, nations and tribes, so that we get to know each other, and that the closest to God in the sight of God are those who are the most pious. So diversity for us is something to celebrate. So if there is one Muslim society that interprets certain aspects of Islam in a different way than another, you know, that is their prerogative, so long as they do not violate the basic principles of Islam. Unfortunately, some people missed that. Part of what I write about and teach about is the extensive rights of Muslim women in Islam. And unfortunately, in many patriarchal societies, and that's not particular to Islam alone, many of these laws have been interpreted in patriarchal fashion for cultural reasons and blamed on the religion itself. This we need to clean up. And I'm proud to say that maybe the cleanup one day will come from American Muslims teaching people back home. Why not? Because here, we have been able to criticize patriarchy and understand what women's rights are about, truly. In the American courts in the United States, much of the issue relating to Islamic law comes through marriage and divorce cases. So for example, a divorce case comes before a judge, and in that case, there is a marriage contract either executed in the original country of residence. They might have come from the Middle East or Pakistan or somewhere else. Or it might have been, the marriage contract itself, been executed in the United States in a mosque, along with a civil marriage. And then at divorce, that contract comes into play, because there are agreements in it. And so how is the judge going to enforce these agreements? In the early cases, which were New York cases, courts were concerned that they are looking at religious contracts. However, in a very early case called Ebitzur, which involved a Jewish ketubah, which is a marriage contract, the judge concluded that so long as the judge looks only at the secular aspects of the contract and doesn't get into the religious aspects, then he could enforce those aspects as a contract in itself. And so that worked. The second case from the Muslim community that came along, in New York also, was Aziz versus Aziz. And in that case, again, the judge looked at the secular items in the contract and enforced those based on the earlier Jewish precedent, which is Ebitzur. Why am I mentioning that? Well, because, you know, religious freedom is not divisible. You cannot say, you know, "I'm going to give religious freedom to this group of religions, but not to that group." They all rely on each other in the way they develop, whether they are in courts or somewhere else. So in the American courts, what has happened is that in divorce cases, you have had the judge look at the secular context and enforce that. Well, what happened in the New Jersey case, which is the case that instigated much of this anti-Sharia movement in the United States? There, to our horror, we find out that there is a guy from, actually, I think it was Morocco, American, who went back to Morocco, married a Moroccan woman, brought her here, and started abusing her, quite a bit. And in very intimate ways, physical abuse. And in the end, I mean, this woman, imagine, she's an immigrant, she doesn't speak English, she doesn't know anything about shelters, she doesn't have help. In the end, she just ran down the street, and somebody found her and took her and helped her, and she went to court and asked for divorce. And there, the judge basically said that, you know, the husband thought it was his religious right to abuse the woman. How could the judge say that? I, as a Muslim, am offended. The whole Muslim community was offended. We cannot justify abuse, and in fact, the Court of Appeals said the same thing. So there are cases where judges succumbed to cultural/religious arguments that they should not have succumbed to. Court of Appeals comes in and corrects that situation. Why? Because one thing we understand in this country is that our constitution is supreme, and nothing whatsoever could violate the public policies of either the state or the federal system. I would like to mention to you that when I came to the United States, and in particular to Virginia, to be a law professor, I found a case here in Chesterfield that I will share with you very quickly, in which the judge, in dealing with a divorce situation, looked at a contract in which the husband had promised to pay the wife a marital gift, and so she came at divorce and asked for that marital gift to be paid. And the judge refused to enforce that provision on the basis that it violates public policy of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Now, I was quite upset. Like, how could that be? I dug a little bit more into it and found out that there was expert testimony explaining what that provision was about, and it gave the judge the wrong information. And based on that information, the judge was quite correct in saying that we should not enforce this contract. Why? Somebody who was unfortunately introduced as an expert said that that provision was about bride price, that the husband was paying the woman her price. And of course, in this country, we do not sell people. So there is a lot of work that needs to be done by Muslims to correct misconceptions and to correct statements like that by Muslims as well as by non-Muslims. So there is a big educational campaign that needs to take place about what Islam really says. But are we concerned that Islam is taking over American courts? No, because we have all the protections of the supremacy clause of the Constitution, so that nothing like that will happen in this country with respect to any religion. The only thing I'd like to leave you with, because this is a town hall, hopefully, style meeting, where I'd like you to ask all sorts of questions, and I would like to tell you from now, there is no question you will ask about Islam that will offend me. We're here to talk. And if you don't come up with these questions, there is no way for you to get rid of them if they are not answered. But what I would like you to think about is that there is quite an exaggeration of what is happening in American courts. What is happening is that sometimes religious contracts do get to court, whether they're Catholic or Jewish or Muslim, et cetera, and judges deal with them, sometimes correctly, sometimes incorrectly. But we have the protection of the supremacy clause to make sure that we are all protected by our constitution. I will stop at that and lead to my other colleague to speak.
First, I want to tell you how singularly inept I feel alongside of these two colleagues of mine. One is a professor of law, a PhD, and the other, an ambassador, and I'm just an immigration attorney practicing in Richmond, Virginia. And I want to caution you to beware of anyone who's advertised as an expert. We all are advertised as such. They are. I don't know that I am. But I do know something about discrimination and religious liberty, which is our theme. Let me try to frame the discussion a little differently, perhaps more generally, and then I'd like to get into just a few specifics in the short time that I have. Let me begin by saying, when Dr. Al-Hibri started, she said if you stood back as a non-Muslim and looked at what was happening, it would be, you know, very troublesome. Well, I'm a non-Muslim. I am Jewish, and I could tell you that it troubles me, because if what is happening in our country today in several of the states could be happening to those of my faith, or perhaps those of your faith ultimately, and it's a threat to our society as a whole, and silence is no longer an option. We must speak out. On the issue of discrimination generally, we, I don't need to tell you, we've become such a divisive society, and these divisions have led to a nation of hyperbole, of epithets, and group identification, all of which pose a threat to the very fabric of our country. When the Susan Sarandans of the world characterize the Pope as a Nazi, I would hope we would all agree that we've gone too far. Words do have consequences. These attempts to put us all neatly or uneetly in certain categories or slots create barriers or borders. And if you read Joseph Lieberman's op-ed piece in today's Richmond Time Dispatch, he said quite correctly that we are defined by our values, not our borders. The one constant in all of this, if you think about it, the one constant has been religious freedom. We are very fortunate in this country that no religious war has ever been fought on our soil, whereas religious strife has been the norm in other countries throughout the centuries. We recognize the importance of freedom of religion as a fundamental right enshrined in law in our First Amendment, and first articulated as a piece of legislation in Jefferson's Statute for Religious Freedom, which was adopted in this city in 1786 by the Virginia General Assembly, first time in history, in history, that that had ever been done. And that has been this nation's guiding religious ideology philosophy since those days. Jefferson spoke of Christians, of the Hebrews, and of the Mohammedans. Now, the Mohammedans, the Muslims. Now, I think how many Muslims were in this country in 1786? You could probably count them on your hands and toes. And yet, he believed in an all-inclusive society, and he knew that this country would bring to its shores this great diverse group of religions, and Islam, of course, being one of the great religions, would also make its way to our soil. Freedom of religion has stood the test of time. When we speak about freedom of religion, everyone supports freedom of religion. Polls have shown, time and again, that when we ask, "Do you support freedom of religion?" the great majority of our country says, "Yes, we do." Of course, when it gets down to specific application of those principles, then it becomes a bit fuzzy. So we recognize the primacy of religious freedom, separation of church and state, and so forth in our society. We also recognize, as Aziza has stated, that religion cannot be the basis for legislation or public policy in a democratic society which fosters and respects pluralism. It could lead to the imposition of one religion upon the entire populace, and as Madison said, "Not only do we need freedom of religion, we need freedom from religion." So the religious laws or doctrines of a particular religious group cannot be binding on the civil law, which must be applied uniformly. Cannot be the law of the courtroom. Otherwise, we would have competing and probable contradictory legal applications, which, among other things, would cause instability and perhaps a Fourteenth Amendment equal protection of the law's issue. Now, I know very little about Sharia law. I know something about halacha in Judaism, and both are defined really the same way: the path, the way. And it's interesting how one is the root of the other. And they are essentially the same, in that they constitute the governing laws applicable to the everyday issues that we all face, in Islam and in Judaism. Halacha refers to the laws which guide the life of pious Jews. It is a way of life formulated by our Torah, five books of Moses. It is a system of thought and conduct based upon the commandments imposed by God upon the Jewish people. And like Sharia law, halacha is defined differently by the various groupings within the Judaic faith. But they are both practiced and enforced among and by segments of their own people: Islamic culture, Judaic culture, Muslims and Jews. The question for me is, can halacha, I think also Sharia and Islam, can halacha be divorced or separated from the theological convictions of Judaism, or are they essentially the same? Are they the... They are the governing bylaws of the religious group, whether it's Islam or Judaism, without which the group has no real core. With respect to the attempted bans, generally, the ban, not specifically because of a particular threat or violation of the law, but just generally with respect to that kind of a ban, clearly, I believe that that, as well as other forms of discrimination, are violative of our constitution. They are discriminatory against Islam when Muslims are not allowed to practice and enforce those laws within their own context. I think then, in these certain cases, the religious law has to be separated from the civil law. The distinction is made between freedom of religion, which is protected, and freedom of the law, which is not. And incidentally, for whatever it's worth, in my many meetings with the late King Hussein of Jordan, King Hassan of Morocco, Mubarak of Egypt, Arafat... of Jordan, King Hassan of Morocco, Mubarak of Egypt, Arafat and Abbas of the Palestinians, in all those meetings, among all the many things that we discussed, not a single one of them asked me, on behalf of Banay Birr, to find support for Sharia law in the United States. That was not an agenda item for them, nor should it have been, nor should it have been. There were other concerns, obviously, and things that we could do and had in common and worked together, but that wasn't one. Again, the general ban on Sharia law, indigenously applied and enforced, and not in conflict with our system of jurisprudence, in other words, general law, imposing no threat to the welfare of others, removes from the Muslim his right to practice his religion and is therefore unconstitutional. So, I leave you, just generally, with a kind of a concept of the importance of religious freedom in this country, how it affects all of us, Muslims, Jews, Catholics. And we have learned that when one religion, any religion, is able to flourish in the United States of America, all religions are able to flourish.
The difficult task of following two brilliant exigencies. Let me begin with a couple of non-substantive points. I said earlier, I was sure to fail to recognize someone in our audience. I would like to welcome Dr. Ahmad Damaj among us, also from Virginia Commonwealth University, who is advisor to the Islamic students there. Thank you for being here, Ahmad. We also, I neglected to point out, enjoy the support, not merely moral, but also financial, of some Richmond institutions. The Bon Secours Hospital System has helped us to defray some of the expenses for this evening's event, and we're thankful to them. I will, in my own remarks, be brief because I want to get on to what I believe is the heart of an occasion like this, which is the public back and forth and the discussion. I have a relatively simple viewpoint to put forward, but I believe earnestly an important one. Dr. Al-Hibri has talked about instances in which judges succumb to cultural pressures. Tommy has mentioned the difficulties that arise from our society being divided by group identities. These are some of the sources of strain that break down the barrier between law and rights on the one hand and culture on the other. And I think that divide is really at the heart of our focus this evening, and that is why I think it is such a useful evening. I said earlier that the mission of the First Freedom Center is to advance the fundamental human rights of freedom of religion and conscience, and that our focus precisely is rights. We are, however, talking about rights in the context of religion, which in the minds of many is a matter of culture. Rights, we say, are a matter of law, but to be sure, laws also arise directly out of culture. We endow them with their own separate standing for, among other reasons, the purpose of modulating disputes and conflicts which arise precisely, very often, from strong cultural and religious beliefs. The reason we keep having to do all of this over and over again is because of change. And throughout history, change has been the norm rather than the exception, that change takes the place of migration and of population change and of the admission to majority cultures of minority cultures. Change is and always has been frightening. It scares established minorities, whose hold on governance, power, and resources by turn frightens newcomers and minorities. It is the First Freedom Center's belief that careful adherence to a structure of rights, an accepted and universal structure of rights, is the best bulwark against fear, both for minorities and for majorities. Without that focus, we are all at the mercy of cultural conflict and competition. So when we look at Sharia, we look at it through that prism. And I want to look at both a domestic and an international context for our thoughts this evening, but in order to introduce that, let me introduce first what I consider to be the First Freedom Center's DNA. Tommy Bayer mentioned the Virginia Statute for Religious Freedom of 1786. What that statute did, in its own words, was to provide that "no man shall be compelled to frequent or support any religious worship, place, or ministry whatsoever, nor shall be enforced, restrained, molested, or burdened in his body or goods, nor shall otherwise suffer on account of his religious opinions or belief, but that all men shall be free to profess and by argument to maintain their opinions in matters of religion, and that the same shall in no wise diminish, enlarge, or affect their civil capacities." The language of two centuries ago, but the two principles which emanate from that and which have been propagated further are usually spoken of in the legal context as "non-establishment and free exercise," no test for office arising out of religion, no prohibition of the professing of one's religious faith. That goes forward into the First Amendment to the United States Constitution. Both of those aspects informs also the Sixth Amendment to the Constitution, which deals, again, with a prohibition on religious tests for office. It goes through much American history, judicial, political, and otherwise. In 1948, these elements, among others, become embodied in the Universal Declaration of Human Rights. We take the 1948 Declaration as universal, by the way, a word that has been the subject of debate during the second half of the 20th century and into the early decades of this one. It is universal, in our opinion, not out of some natural law context or divine law context, but simply because it's been subscribed to universally by the membership of the United Nations system and re-subscribed to several times in several documents, which have repeated many of its basic precepts, including the 1993 Vienna Declaration and Program of Action, which binds, again, the membership of the United Nations community and enjoins it to make no exceptions from the granting of human rights, including freedom of religion, including on the basis of cultural or religious particularity. So why do I mention the international as well as the domestic context? Well, in the domestic context, as Tommy has said, in our opinion, were states like Oklahoma or Tennessee to formulate statutes which forbade the adherence, the voluntary adherence by members of Islamic communities to Islamic religious law that is consistent with the Constitution, laws, and ordinances of the United States? That would be a clear-cut violation of the American Constitution, a clear-cut diminution of the value and impact of the Bill of Rights, a clear-cut diminution for all minorities and majorities alike of our freedoms, of our basic first freedoms. I mention the international context because it seems to me too often the people who frame these laws have conflated what they observe or believe that they observe abroad with what is happening in the United States. Now, we, the First Freedom Center, obviously look closely at what is happening in the world when it comes to the implementation and adherence to these international covenants. And we publish a report each year on minority communities at risk and what has happened to them, what is being done to diminish their freedom and their flourishing, what they're not getting in the way of their internationally guaranteed rights. And among the countries we look at, in addition to authoritarian regimes in Burma and China and populist countries, perhaps in Latin America and elsewhere, are the countries of the Islamic world. And we do look at what it means when countries say in their constitutions that Sharia is the source of civil legislation. And we do look at instances in which governments directly relate what they consider to be that mandate to the framing of blasphemy laws and apostasy laws. And we look at the instances in which things, which human rights monitoring organizations consider to be fundamental violations of human rights are described by their perpetrators inaccurately, I think many Muslims would say, in terms of Sharia. But I mention that not to direct our attention at the naming of misdoers and misdeeds abroad, but rather because it is the tendency, unfortunately, of many Americans to assume, quite incorrectly, to conflate quite inaccurately those phenomena in the wider world with what is happening in this country. And that isn't what is happening in this country. I know of no instance in which any Islamic community in the United States has undertaken actions to try within its own confines, or certainly for society at large, the kinds of distortions of Sharia which one observes abroad. It's important to bear this in mind because we look at the world today as we become a country and a world of group identities in terms of what some call the transition from the mixing bowl to the salad bowl. Those are cultural paradigms, and I won't dwell on that since tonight is about rights and laws, not culture. But if in the salad bowl the tomatoes start attacking the squashes and misinterpreting the life and the intentions of one of the contents of the salad bowl, then all the contents suffer. It is unquestionably the case that if discriminatory actions with the force of law are undertaken at the expense of Islamic communities, which voluntarily and legally wish to pursue the precepts of their faith, we all suffer. And with that, I turn to the Q and A period again. I would ask those who wish to participate in the discussion to make use of the microphones in the aisle. And you can direct your question either to an individual speaker or to all speakers.
My name is Rob James. My question is Professor Al-Hibri, but it may well be, Ambassador, that you answered it. Earlier in your talk, if I understood you, you said that there is the country's law and there is the religious law, they are different, but that the country's law is an interpretation of the religious law. This would be problematic to me if it were stated as a norm or as applying in the United States. Am I correct that you were describing the way some countries abroad understand their law and religion and not what is or should be here? Because, by the way, I just loved your treatment of the cases you dealt with and all that it means about religion and the state of this country.
Actually, I was making the same point that Ambassador Bell made about not conflating what Muslims in the US are about with what Muslims are about in various countries. The Muslim world is not homogeneous. There are over a billion people who are Muslims, and they're not, they don't all believe the same thing in terms of detail. Of course, we all believe in one God and things like that, but you can't say that they all subscribe to the same interpretation of the set of beliefs everywhere. I'll give you two examples. Look at the Muslims of the Taliban or Afghanistan, and look at me, who was born in Beirut, Lebanon. Don't think that when I came to the United States, I discovered democracy. No. Don't think that when I came to the United States, I learned how to dress in Western garb. No. Nothing changed about me since I've been in Beirut in the heydays of Lebanon, and then I came here. Compare me to the images you see in the pictures of the Taliban, women, et cetera. What is the difference? My grandfather was a major regional religious scholar, but he understood his religion in a way different from the way the Taliban understand it. He's entitled to that. In Islam, there is freedom of thought, so that each person is free to read the Quran directly, we have no clergy, and then interpret our faith the way we understand it. Of course, it is a great idea to utilize the expertise of religious people who've done the, jurists who've done the interpretation before us and choose what we like, not in terms of like, you know, in terms of what they like intellectually. But no one really is bound by somebody else's thought if you don't believe in it. So when I spoke about Muslims in the United States, we live in a different society. We live in the 21st century, not the whole world lives in the 21st century. We live in the West, which is different from the East, and we are Western Muslims of the 21st century. How do we understand our Islam? We understand it through the life experience we are living here, in a very, in a very new way, because of all the knowledge we have accumulated in this society, different from the knowledge accumulated in some other part of the world. In this society, our understanding of Islam is practiced within our society, our community, our personal life. Don't confuse that with what some Muslim state says is Islamic law on its books and in its courts. They're two different things. Those reflect their interpretation through their experience, their culture, their history. Mine reflects my experience. And I'm living in a society which is secular, so there is the supremacy clause of the Constitution. Whatever you believe, whatever I believe, we practice at home, but when we go to court, it's the American Constitution that is supreme. In the other societies, there are different arrangements, and we can talk about that if you like. But that's, I think, what Ambassador Bell was talking about. Don't conflate the two.
Hi, I'm Isabel Richmond. Good to see you, Aziza.
Good to see you.
I want, first of all, to say that I admire your work tremendously and think that it's innovative and forward-looking, and I'm so grateful that there are Muslim Americans like you and Muslim scholars who really want to have this kind of impact on the larger Muslim world. Having said that, I wanted to ask you to elaborate just a bit further on one statement that you made about Islam embracing diversity and wishing to do so for all pious people. Here in the United States, when we speak of freedom of religion, it extends, of course, not just to pious people, but even to heretics and blasphemers of all sorts. How would you interpret that so that it could be made to embrace our current constitutional understanding of the protection of freedom of religion for all people, for people of all belief and thought?
Sorry, these were two different points. The first point I was making is that Islam did not impose on Muslims one understanding, one interpretation, one way of life. To the contrary, it says Muslims can introduce into their laws, the state laws we were talking about, or in various countries, they can introduce customary laws from their own society, so long as they don't violate the basic tenets of Islam dealing with human rights and other issues. That's the point I was making then, and I said that God, in the sight of God, the people closest to God are not, for example, the men, or the rich, or the white, or the Pakistanis, or the Arabs, it's the pious people. Okay? And who is pious in this room? I don't know. I cannot tell you who's the most pious. That is really left for God. Now, you're asking, what about people who are, you know, what does Islam say about people of other religions or no religion at all? And, you know, I would like to read to you from the Quran, something very simple. It's chapter 2, verse 256, which everybody who's a Muslim knows it. And in fact, it was in the Quran that Jefferson had in his library. It says very simply, "Let there be no compulsion in religion." Everybody is free in Islam to believe or not believe, even To even within Islam, you're free to belong to one sect or the other or nothing. Outside Islam, you're free to believe in one religion or none. Islam leaves you free because the most important thing about Judgment Day is that whatever God is going to ask you about must have been chosen through your free will, not through the coercion of a state or a society or your father or your husband or whatever. So let there be no compulsion in religion. And then I would like to say, just to comment on the Virginia statute for freedom of religion that you talked about, and I think you mentioned too, that in fact, 1,500 years ago, when the Prophet Muhammad was persecuted and he had to leave Mecca, even though he came from the most important tribe there, they didn't like, they were idol worshippers, and they didn't like the fact that he was teaching about a God. So he had to leave, and he was invited to what's called Medina or Yethrep, two names for the same city. And when he arrived there, he was asked to be, to rule the city, to be the head of state, not only the religious leader, the prophet. The city was made out of two religious groups, the Muslims and the Jews. How does the Prophet of Islam rule a city with two religions? What happens? And if you will allow me, I will quickly read to you what he says in a charter, which was basically a constitution of Medina. He says, "In the name of God," you know, he's doing this, he is the Prophet, et cetera. He says, he speaks about the Muslims and those who supported them, meaning the Jews of Medina, because they were all supporting each other. He says, "Of these two communities, they are one nation, ummah, to the exclusion of all people." Muslims and Jews are one nation or ummah. Then more specifically, and I only pick one item because you can go through other items that are repetitive. He says, "The Jews of Ben Yehov are one nation with the believers," in case we missed the more general statement. "The Jews have their religion and the Muslims have theirs, including their freedmen and their persons, et cetera, et cetera. And then the close friends of the Jews are as themselves. So to each his religion, but we are one ummah." This is the diversity, but in it you have one, there are one with various beliefs or no beliefs. That is really the Islamic point of view. I do have another statement from the Prophet himself about the relationship with Christianity. I don't know, do I have a second to say that? He wrote a letter addressed to Muslims and all those who adopt Christianity in the east and west of the earth, near and afar, et cetera. And I want you, as you listen to this, to compare what the Prophet did with what we hear on the news today. It says whoever breaches this covenant, turns away from it, et cetera, violates God's mandate and so on. So it's a very serious thing to violate. He says, "The Prophet made the following specific undertakings towards the Christians. I will protect the Christians' back and defend them from any danger myself, and also with my helpers, the people of my faith and my followers, as if they were my own people and congregation, I will insulate them from harm. Bishops may not be removed from their dioceses, nor priests from their monasteries, nor hermits from their hermitage. None of their churches and houses of worship may be destroyed. None of the money from their churches may be used in building a mosque or houses for Muslims. Whoever commits any of these actions violates God's covenant and disobeys His Prophet. Priests, bishops, and people who worship hermits," that is hermits, "shall not be forced to pay taxes or fines, et cetera, et cetera." So it's a different style of religious diversity, but within it, there is freedom for everybody to believe and to practice and not to be oppressed by the other, another kind of a salad bowl.
Next question.
Hi, I'm from the Collegian, it's the school newspaper. And I had a question about how Sharia could possibly be incompatible with the First Amendment. So hypothetical, if, let's say, a group of people were planning on depicting Muhammad in pictorial form, would that be subjected to prior restraint under Sharia? And, you know, under the First Amendment, as per the Pentagon Papers, you can't do that. You can publish and then maybe you punish, but you can't stop them from publishing. So is that an element within Sharia that's probably incompatible?
Well, as Tommy Bear said, you know, Sharia or halakhalo is something we live by ourselves in our communities. So certainly, if you depict God, for example, in a pictorial form, I would be offended. But do I have a police to bring around and stop what you're doing? No. I would mention to you that recently, I think yesterday, I read about a movie that, I think it came out in Tunisia, which, it has one short scene in it in which a person is talking to God, and God is depicted. And it was shown, and a lot of people were offended and said so. So I don't think you need to jump from the fact that we are offended by this to the claim that we would impose a law about this, because our religious belief is a private belief. Now, if you're talking about some other countries outside the United States, you know, somewhere, who knows where, some countries will impose a restraint, others won't. You all are familiar with what happened with the Denmark cartoons, et cetera. We're all familiar with the issues of blasphemy in Pakistan. And in fact, the issue of blasphemy is very troubling because, as far as I'm concerned, it goes directly against "let there be no compulsion in religion" in some of the interpretations of that law. So the answer is, it will certainly offend me. Would there be a prior restraint? I don't see how.
Let me just chime in a little bit. In this country, we have the right to offend, and we can do so without fear of repercussion. And that, again, is where our body of law trumps the religious law of any particular group.
Are there other questions?
Hi, my name is Becky Clark, and I'd be interested in how you explain honor killing within the Islamic faith.
Oh, in one word, crime. Is that good enough? Actually, it is really a crime in the sense that if there was an Islamic country really imposing Sharia law, they would be taking the killers to court, and there would be a trial, and it would be a sentence because they've killed somebody. Okay? That is not happening. In many ways, it's not happening. First of all, under Islamic law, if there is any problem with adultery, the rules apply equally to men as well as they do to women. I have yet to hear about a case of an honor killing against a man. Have you? No? Okay. Secondly, why killing? Why killing? So what happened? So somebody is claiming, and I've seen some of these movies, they are very heartbreaking. Somebody is claiming that a woman dishonored her family, I don't know, there's a, there's a range of accusations, some might be very severe, some are even insignificant allegations. And so the tribe moves in and decides to kill the woman? What is going on there? What's going there is patriarchy in its pure form, unadulterated form. You know, there are these weak women, they don't understand their religious rights, and even if they understood them, how are they going to enforce them in a society which is highly patriarchal, does not even listen to their religion, but uses the cloak of religion to sort of make acceptable their behavior? These are all a bunch of criminals. That really is the short answer.
Hi, I'm Mike Floyd. I'm a retired First Sergeant from the US military. Spent two years in Iraq. My sister spent four years in Afghanistan. I got a brother who spent a year in Iraq. The first year I was there, I worked with a lot of locals. We hired a lot of people from the town next door, and we had KBR on the site. They actually hired people to teach them how to do a lot of different skills. The people that worked for me, basically my comment's going to be, we had orders to, you know, we were guests in that country. Their religious day is on Friday, as we understand. Their shopping day is on Saturday, kind of like it used to be here in the old days where everybody went to town on Saturday. Ninety percent of the workers that worked for me wanted off on the shopping day to go shopping, and they preferred to come in and work their Friday. Also, we allowed enough time during lunch for their noon time prayers. Only had one guy come out and break out his rug and do his prayers. The rest of them just kind of sit around and talked and joked and everything else. I mean, I got to be good friends. What convinced me was, in the Christian religion, we have backsliders. Well, we have backsliders in the Muslim religion. I mean, that's all it is to it, plain and simple. There are a lot of good guys over there. I mean, I would love to go back and check on them, see how they were doing. They had invited me into their homes. Needless to say, we're not allowed to lose, leave the base unless we're there. The biggest concern, one other thing, we built Christian churches in those areas.
Excuse me, sir, if you have a question, could you move on to the question?
Okay. Why is it that there's a lot of countries over there, if you convert from being a Muslim to a Christian, you basically said, sentenced you to death?
I don't know how many countries that are like that. And the issue has been coming up for many years now among jurists who have been repeatedly stating that that interpretation of Islamic law is not correct. Because I just read for you, "Let there be no compulsion in Islam, in religion." So, so, you know, so you can, there is no compulsion, but if you change from Islam to another religion, I'm going to kill you. I mean, how does that sound to you? It doesn't make sense in light of the Quran. There are some juristic reasons for why in the past, this has been interpreted this way, when people were at war with each other, and a person not only changed his religion, but moved from one side to the other side of the military and took with him the secrets of the community. And there it was seen as treason. So in that context, you know, it made more sense. But just changing your religion, it doesn't make sense to me because the Quran is very clear on that. And it's also, it also means that, by the way, I spoke about changing your religion, other religions, but you also can choose to have no religion and still be part of the community.
Could I just note on that, you know, when we look at these matters, and what you're speaking about, sir, is, you know, usually referred to as apostasy legislation or apostasy laws. You know, the reason I keep coming back to this abstract, but still real tissue of law and rights, which I like to the extent I possibly can to separate from culture, is because we've spent a lot of this evening reviewing how culture warps those rights and laws. And in the case of Islam, as it is set forth in the Holy Quran, in the case of religious laws adumbrated in the context of Sharia or of halaka or of canon law or elsewhere, though the one is distinctly religious and the other, the context of rights we've discussed in the modern world is not, there's equally this matter of warping. And that warping often has to do with exclusivity and the preference of people, we're the heirs of hunter-gatherers, I suppose, hardwired to want everybody to be just like us. And that same exclusivity is almost surely in play when we, in our own context, frame statutes to try to prevent the observance of these religious laws and customs voluntarily within communities. But this whole matter of exclusivity is not simply the precept of religion. If you look at authoritarian countries which fear religious practice and attempt to control it through the contrivance of creating state-approved forms of religion, that, you know, the Chinese version of Roman Catholicism, and do not tolerate any, or do their best to prevent toleration of any veering from that line, the same, the same mechanism is in play. So I think it's a tendency toward exclusivity, which is not exclusively the preserve of Islam.
My name is Jane Hogan, and I have two questions that are quite unrelated. Can I ask one and sit down and then?
I think if you can just get them both out, well.
Get them both out. Okay. The first one is for Professor. You quoted Quran 256 about, 22256, about there being no compulsion in religion. However, as you know, that was superseded in the ninth verse of the Quran by the verse, "Fight those who believe not in Allah on the last day, nor hold that judged which the Prophet hath judged, nor acknowledge the religion of truth; and if they be people of the book, fight until they pay the jizya with willing submission and feel themselves subdued." Reconcile that supersession.
Okay. First of all, there is, as far as I'm concerned, no supersession in the Quran. Whoever told you that some verses supersede others is representing one juristic tradition different from the one I pursue. God does not change His mind, and the verses are all very clear. When there are two verses that appear to conflict, and I've written about that, and not only in this context, but generally, you have to look at, this is the art of interpretation. Is the verse general or is it conditional? If it is conditional, what are the conditions? Okay? Is it a specific rule or is it a general rule, et cetera? Once understood, you will then understand how to interpret the law without this, resorting to this notion of supersession, which I do not subscribe to. I make this argument usually with respect to a couple of verses on women's rights, not in this context. If you look at the verse I just quoted you, it has no bells or whistles. It's very simple, no ifs or buts, "Let there be no compulsion in religion." That's it. That's the general rule. The verse you are quoting relates to a specific situation, historical situation at that time, relating to people who were attacking the Muslims. And the position of the Prophet was, if you are attacked, you can fight back. It's sort of hard to do now a juristic analysis of verses in the Quran, and I usually don't do that regardless of the topic, but I would suggest that this is the line along which you need to look at these two. The general principle is, "Let there be no compulsion in religion." There is a permission to fight those who fight you. If they stop, you stop. And I can probably email you the verse which says, if, you know, if they stop, you stop. There are other verses in the Quran. See, the important notion about the Quran is that it's all God's word, as far as we are concerned. So God does not contradict Himself, because He is all-knowing, He's all-good, He's all-powerful. So, for example, there are parts in the Quran also that say, you know, "As to those who believe something different, let the good word be the messenger between you and them. And suddenly, you will find that those you thought were your enemies are your dear friends." Okay, so I think you're getting my message, which is you cannot pluck things out of context and say, this is what the Quran says. This has been my problem, for example, with those who criticized the Quran as denying women's rights. They picked a couple or three statements in the Quran, verses of the Quran, and they say, "This shows that Muslim women are inferior." Wrong. You have to look at every statement in the larger context. You've been told, I'm a philosopher. I studied Hegel, and I can pick out from him, you know, or Kant or the others, verses, sentences that out of context would be totally distorted. And I would be accused as a bad theorist and a professor if I did that in academia. But we are allowing ourselves to do it to each other's religion. But we are allowing ourselves to do it to each other's religions. And I think we should not do that.
Uh, may I, may I do a quick, uh, response as well, uh, to that? This may be apostasy on my part, but I, I never believed in political correctness anyway. Um, I feel quite confident that, um, if we had an opportunity, we would probably excise certain portions from the Old Testament and the New Testament as well. Um, and I would say probably for the Quran as, as well. It's difficult to view those, uh, every line in, in the, in this, in this modern area. For example, the New Testament speaks of mercy and forgiveness and all that stuff too, but of course that predated the Crusades, the Spanish Inquisition and the Holocaust. So I think we all probably have a, a little bit to learn as we continue to evolve as what we term ourselves to be human beings.
Next question. Oh, you had, I thought you'd done two.
Yeah, I saw, I had two.
Oh, it was two verses.
Two completely different. But can I answer this for just a moment? And, and I'm not gonna dwell on it, but for just a moment, well, I obviously don't agree with you or, or with your interpretation about, uh, expunging certain paragraphs in the Bible because the Bible is not used today as a juridical school, whereas Islam is a juridical religion. And the modern-day fiqh of, of Islam, published, translated from the 13th century and attested to by Al-Azhar as the very, very, very valuable translation of Islamic jurisprudence. And that, of course, is al-misri and also in the Hidayah is very, very specific about Allah never, I, I can't remember the phrase.
Excuse me, ma'am, is this leading to a question?
No, I'm, I'm just, just saying that.
We'd really like to keep it.
Okay. Well, then, can I ask my other question?
But can I please comment on this? Just quickly to comment. Uh, yeah, I did not offer the possibility of excising anything from the Quran. This is where I differ with Tommy Bear. Uh, you said you disagree with me. I don't mind you disagreeing with me, but I would like you, if you disagree, to base that on knowledge, not on opinion. And you have not seen the arguments of the various scholars, which show that the interpretations of certain verses that are specific or conditional, it's very important to figure out what they are because if you don't do it right, you're gonna end up with the wrong conclusions. Okay? That's all I'm asking you to do.
I, I, I didn't have, I mean, this isn't the place for me to argue scholarship with you. I disagree and I have written it. But anyway, the other question's completely different from this. And that was, that, uh, you, you, you objected to the American law bill or any of the American law bills appearing or maybe appearing in different states because they would deny religious light rights, yet they very specifically say that ecclesiastical courts, nobody will challenge in any religions, religious courts, any religious rulings, as long as they do not conflict with the rights guaranteed by the Constitution of X state or the United States. So, given that, then when, when Professor said, uh, you, you talked about the case of the Moroccan and the wife abuse, and I, I couldn't hear you very well, but if you were talking about the New Jersey case where the domestic court ju, okay, where the domestic court judge used, uh, Islamic mores to say that the man's having beaten his wife was okay and did not grant her the restraining order, and it took the appeals court judge to grant the restraining order. If that lower court judge, and you told, you, you admitted, he didn't know what he was talking about and he should have obeyed the law, but if there had been a law in New Jersey saying that no foreign law or customs will be used to adjudicate if they deny the, the person the rights guaranteed him by the Constitution of New Jersey, then the lower court judge couldn't have made that mistake because he would have said, "Well, I don't care what your religious beliefs are about beating your wife, but it's against the law in this country, restraining order granted." So how, how do you come into that?
Tommy, do you wanna go first?
No, you answer.
First of all, I, I mean, I, I think you chose an easier example, which is I brought up, but I would like to read to you from the original Tennessee Senate bill, which was then withdrawn and replaced. And it has a lot of places in it than what one could read from, but let me read to you a part of this, which says, "The knowing adherence to Sharia," which I knowingly adhere to it, "constitutes a conspiracy to further the legal, political, and military doctrine and system which embraces the law of jihad." Come on. That, these are the bills we're talking about. The example you used is simple. There is a supremacy clause. You don't need, you do not need a redundancy. You don't need somebody to tell the judge that if something is against public interest and the laws of the state, you should not enforce it. I already told you that somebody in Chesterfield County did just that. And that was at least 10, 15 years ago and he didn't need a bill. These bills are not designed to protect the supremacy clause and the laws of the land. These bills are designed to make it a conspiracy and a crime for me to adhere to my religion. And I just read to you from it.
That was 2007, oh, 15 years ago. That New Jersey case.
Yeah. I might be wrong about the years, but that's what I read here.
Next question, please.
Uh, hi. Um, I'm actually a recent convert to Islam and I was wondering if there's, uh, anything, I'm sorry. You can't hear. I'm sorry about that. I'm a convert, a recent convert to Islam. I was wondering if there's anything that I can do to protect my basic, uh, you know, religious freedoms against this anti-sharia campaign?
Well, first of all, I have to tell you, sometimes I meet converts to Islam who, some of them don't understand what they converted to. So I think it is very important for you to understand what Islam is. One example is that, one day when I was explaining what Islam is about, a convert was very upset when I spoke about women's rights. He said, "That's not why I converted." I guess he thought that if he becomes a Muslim, then he can treat women as inferior. You know, we, we better be careful about these things, you know? I don't need this convert. As far as your, uh, religious rights, I think, first of all, you need to speak out. And to speak out the American way. The American way is by talking about constitutional rights, talking about what this nation is about, and knowing that in talking that way, you don't stand alone. I'm here on a stage and I'm the only Muslim, but I'm not standing alone. And that's a very important thing to understand about the United States. That's my best answer to you.
Good evening. My name is Monia. I'm from Morocco and I studied Islam throughout, you know, um, my childhood as I grew up to in school. And, um, I had a couple of things to say before asking my question, because I had to ask a question. Um, okay? Um, one of them is, um, we could totally go on and on saying, you know, what the Quran says or what the Prophet says, and, uh, we can give justifications for basically everything or anything from any religion and not just Islam or, you know, um, the Bible or throughout, or, eh, any other book or, uh, other faith. My point is, the violence we see, like, I heard people talk about, you know, Holocaust, about the Iraq, about the wars going on and everything. My point is that violence has been going on like throughout the history for so many years and it's been linked to religion, to God, to an ideology, to this, to that, but nobody really knows what the real reason is. And, um, um, I don't see why people are so stubborn. I mean, that's my question, basically. Why do we focus on the details and try to prove who's right and who's wrong and what is and what is not and who did what right or wrong, instead of just focusing on the real thing? Like, for me, um, I do respect law a lot, like everywhere, not just in my country or here, but in the whole world. I think it is universal and I think religious freedom should be universal and should not be linked to just Sharia or, uh, Halacha?
Yes, Halacha.
Halacha. Or Halacha or any religious law, but, um, I think it is more of a universal question and that people need to focus more on achieving that rather than, um, discovering what is, you know?
I think you put your finger in, on something very important, uh, which is all these religious wars historically and religious conflict, even if it's not a war. How could that be happening? Because as far as I know, the various religions, and I don't mean just the Abrahamic ones, they all talk about introspection, internal peace, cooperating with others, forgiveness. Where is all of this going? Why don't we see it? You know, sometimes, you know, people think that they have to really defend God. And I'm thinking, really? I'm gonna defend God? Or is God gonna defend me? Because God is a lot more powerful than I am and he doesn't need me. So we got it backwards. And why? I think, you know, there is a lot of fear in, in these issues, like you mentioned. And I'm afraid there's something else sometimes. Very often, I think we forget spirituality altogether. That's a whole other lecture of mine, how we succumb to temptation, the temptation of the will to power, to greed, to acquisition. And then we start using religion to achieve these goals, whether knowingly, consciously or not. But religion in itself, if we just, you know, I mean, I think what we need to do when a conflict arises is sit back and ask, would the Prophet Muhammad do this? Would Jesus do this? You know? And I think if we just ask those two questions, we'll go home. But we don't. So there is a real deficit in religious belief. And I, I think a lot of our religious belief has been secularized in these days and we are suffering from it.
May I, may I, um, I think, um, your, uh, your statement preceding your question was, was an interesting one. I think that, uh, religious wars are uniquely, uh, human phenomena. And I, I, I think it's improper now, and I think it has been over the centuries, to somehow invoke the name of God, to bring God into all this stuff. Uh, because I'm sure God would, would have nothing to do with any of these, any of these wars. And if you, uh, Eli, Eli Wiesel said that when, when the name of God is invoked as authority for killing, you're really making God an accomplice to the murder. And it just, it's, it's improper and it, it clearly makes no sense whatsoever. It is, uh, I, I think the religious wars frankly are based on more than just religion. I think it, it, there's a crossover. You get into the political, you get into the cultural, et cetera. But, you know, all, all religious laws, whether it be Halacha, whether it be the Quran, Sharia law, whether it be Buddhism or Hinduism or whatever, what are they all? They're all moral codes. That's what they are. And if you take a look at, at, at them, at, you know, at the significant portions and, and forget about some of them, that's what I meant about excising. I, I know many people believe that these are immutable, but, uh, but if you, if you take a look at that, there's, there's not that much distinction between them all, um, in terms of how one is to conduct his or her life in this world. Let me give you an example, and this is a bit of a stretch, but I just was thinking about it, of, of how you have a crossover from religious to perhaps political, to perhaps cultural. And what I do for a living, my focus is immigration law, which as most of you know is an absolutely broken system. Uh, but I can show you examples of bias, discrimination, almost on a daily basis. It happened today. It happened today. Uh, I have a large Arab and Muslim clientele. My client, a Muslim man, had filed for a fiancee petition to bring his fiancee over from a Muslim country. Um, and normally that's not a particularly difficult process, but it's processed and there's a, there's a, do something in the United States first, then he goes overseas to the embassy, and then there's an interview. Now, you have to show a relationship between the petitioner in the United States and his fiancee overseas. Eh, that is by cards, Christmas cards, or not Christmas in an Arab country, but cards, birthday cards, whatever. Um, it could be emails, photographs, all those kinds of things. And in my, this particular case, about a month ago, I think about a month ago, he was actually there to visit with her and he came back. So she goes to the interview. And at the interview, he's asking her about him and what she knows about him, and I usually prep my clients for these kinds of questions, some of which are absolutely ridiculous. All right, so what happens, what happened here is she, because of the custom in her country, they had an engagement party, she referred to him as her husband. And he looked at her hand and saw a ring and he says, "You're married." She says, "No, I'm not married. We had an engagement party and it's custom to refer when that happens, 'You are my husband, I am your wife,' et cetera, et cetera." Um, and we exchanged rings. Doesn't mean we're married, we were not married, we're gonna get married in Virginia." Revoked. That was it. Now, I think that's discrimination. Now, eh, maybe it's because I see this kind of thing constantly, but it is unacceptable, it is inexcusable. That interviewer did not want this woman, a Muslim, to come to the United States. I'm convinced of it. And those are things that you in this audience don't see. And those are the kinds of things that we need to speak up against and there are far worse stories than, and cases even than that. So there are many forms of discrimination and we need to be aware of.
Sir?
Yes, thank you for taking my question. Uh, Dr. Al Hebri, in your understanding of the Quran and, uh, and of the Sharia, was Osama bin Laden and the 19 hijackers, were they apostates?
He asked, in, in the context of your understanding of Islam, the Quran and Sharia, is Osama bin Laden an apostate? Apostate?
I mean, uh, on what basis?
Was he following?
There is a difference between not following your religion, claiming to be, say, Christian Muslim or Jew and not following it, and saying you're, you don't believe in it and being an apostate. There's a difference between the two. And I don't know what he said, I, I haven't followed his remarks. Has he done something not Islamically correct? Yes. Is he an apostate? I don't know. Did he say he didn't believe in, in their religion? I mean, he has to say so to be an apostate.
Well, it's generally America's understanding. I, I hope I can speak for America that he did it in the, uh...
He did what?
He, he, he carried out the plots on 9/11.
Yeah, so, so he committed a crime.
In, in the, uh, in the name of, uh, Islam and following the Sharia.
Right. He can make those claims. I mean, what we're talking about is not really about Islamic law. We're talking about when do you call a person an apostate, right? Whether Christianity, Islam, or something else. You call them that when they state that they moved away from their religion. You're telling me that he didn't say that, he said the opposite. The question should be, is he correct that he could... The question should be, is he correct that he could do this act in this name of Sharia? And I would tell you absolutely not, he couldn't.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions?
Hi, I'm Katie Tisant, and I was just wondering, I feel like especially our campus community, we're spoiled to live with this, like, utopian openness about religious affiliation and sexual orientation. And I was just wondering how students you know of are already stepping out of this, whether undergrad or law students are stepping out of this awareness and trying to make a difference and become involved with the Muslim issues or how they could do this? Does that make sense?
I think that's for you. She wondered how students elsewhere are stepping out...
Well, I'm wondering how students, I think you're a professor on campus, I'm wondering how you encourage students or you could encourage students to step out of our little safe bubble of openness of our religious affiliation and make a difference somehow?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we also try to do it on an international level. In my organization, we take interns from various faiths who are students and who come and work and see the issues firsthand and deal with them. We also teach leadership. We bring Muslim women from this country and from other countries and try to teach them about Islam the way I've been talking to you. And what we found out is that that experience is extremely valuable, because when you put women from different countries, all Muslim, together, they start realizing that they're doing things differently in the name of religion. And therefore, there are differences, and they start looking at their understanding of the religion more critically, and they start connecting and talking to each other and, you know, coming up with new ways of looking at things. That has been very productive, and it has hopefully been our way of educating, not in the United States but also abroad. I'd like to mention that. Much of what, you know, I have to say that as early as, like, 1992, I started writing on some of these issues, for example, Islam and democracy and things like that. And I have gone to visits to various Muslim countries through the State Department. And I remember in one summer, I think I visited probably six, seven countries in one shot, which was huge, because in each country you go to several cities, and talked about these issues. So these are not issues I only talk about to American audience that is non-Muslim because it sounds good. I do not have two messages, one for Americans and one for people abroad. This is really a message that we all, you know, believe in, and I take it abroad, and I get questions from people like you in the audience, but who are Muslim and who are questioning my interpretation, and I explain. So this is part of the whole educational process, and a big part of it is educating young women, because these are our target. And in about a month, I'm hoping that I will be flying to a country, which will remain unnamed, a Muslim country, where we will be educating Muslim women about their right to participate in their society and in the legal process as well. This is, it might be simple to you, but it's huge for that country. So we really try to live by what we say.
Further questions? If not, I probably have failed to take advantage of the capabilities and the intelligence of many in this audience this evening. I see we have Mr. William Hurd of Troutman Sanders here, a member of our board, who knows a great deal about these subjects, but I won't impose on him to continue the questions if he doesn't wish. I will turn to the next phase of this program, which was to give myself and my fellow panelists opportunities to raise any open questions we may have discovered before Dr. Al Hebri summarizes the consensus, if we have one of this evening.
I just wanna know why no Muslims stood up, except for the Moroccan lady, no Muslims in the community stood up and asked a question. I would like to hear from you guys. Are you, what is happening? Are you too timid to talk in a general audience? May I?
Yes, of course.
Good evening, my name is Jamil Tuma. I'm, I was born in Baghdad, Iraq, and I'm a Muslim. And I feel there's a lot of fear being marketed nowadays in terms of the painting the whole Muslim with a broad brush about Sharia. And I think this is a political agenda. In my opinion, I encourage that, because I feel that everybody has to compete. And we as Muslims, we have to brush our talent to have a dialogue and to stand up and express our faith and define ourselves. So I would not like to hush up anybody who is criticizing the Sharia, or he is just curious, he wants to learn more about Islam. Personally, I am very interested to explain the way I practice Islam. I'm not a terrorist, I don't support suppressing other people, and I don't want to be suppressed as well. So in terms, if anybody would like to tap on my resources, I'm glad to help, and thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other Muslims in the audience want to speak out? Professor Demage?
Could you please come to the microphone, sir? You need to come to the microphone.
Think they want you at the microphone to get you on the record.
Odom, was a decision about the immigration made in the United States or in some foreign country?
It was made in the United States embassy in the foreign country.
Does that applicant have a right of appeal?
No, sir. It does not. There is no right of appeal. There are some things that can be done, but the right of appeal does not exist. It shows the authority, the power of an interviewer, a bureaucrat, and it's unfortunate.
Very well, then perhaps we can move to final comments.
I introduced myself at the beginning, so I won't do that again. But part of the reason why we started the Muslim Law Student Association at the Richmond Law School was for that transparency that I think is lacking in the American Islamic understanding. And what my commitment, what our commitment as a Muslim Law Student Association is, is that we will continue to foster these types of discussions, we will continue to host these kinds of discussions. We had one on Sharia law last year, and we'll continue to have these kind of important discussions, because I think until that transparency is there, or at least the perception is there, perception is reality, then these concerns will continue to fester unmitigated. And I agree with this gentleman here that these questions are good, they're necessary, and we want you to know that we're here to answer them, and we're not by any means going to shy away from them.
Good evening, please be on to you. My name is Shaheen. Is a statement, but not a question, is it okay? Okay. I'm a physician at practice in Richmond, Virginia for almost 20 years, and I was asked to do a presentation in the VCU, sorry, a couple of months ago. And during that, I did a little research studies, and being a physician, so I chose a topic like, you know, science and Islam. And it was so exciting that, which I didn't know, that in the people who are physicians OB-GYN, they know like, you know, the conception, how it happened, you know, with the sperm and ovum, and there's different stages of like, you know, reproduction. When I compared with the modern science and the Quran, which is clearly, I think, Professor, you know, you might know better than I do, that how clearly it is stated from different stages, like, you know, of the conception until, like, you know, the baby's born. So the Quran and Islam is not a, like, you know, 14th century religion. It's yet to discover, and so much is there. And many of you are scientists, you know that, you know, in the science, we know that, you know, in the animal, we have male and female. It's just 100 years ago, but in the Quran it is there.
So let me comment about that. I mean, it is an important statement to say that when the Muslim regimes thrived in medieval times, they thrived on science, among other things. We are not cut off, by the way, people in the Middle East who think we don't want Western civilization because it's foreign to us, they don't understand that Western civilization is based also on Islamic contributions. And I don't think the West, many people in the West understands that. It comes through the Renaissance, it came through Europe, it came through many other ways. But for example, algebra, algorithms, medicine, et cetera, all of these things flourished in the heydays of the Islamic state. Why? Because in the Quran it says, "Look around you, everything in the universe is God's miracle." So we should not be afraid of looking at nature. God created nature, and by looking at it, whether a scientist or poet or whatever, we can admire the will of God and the abilities of God at creation. I think that's basically the point you wanted to...
Thank you very much.
You're welcome. Do you wanna...
We need to keep it at the microphone, please.
These insisted that I ask something, so...
I shamed you into it.
Well, I was wondering if you can comment, maybe also Tommy, because I think it's also an important issue, is this misperception about that a religious person, a devout person, can be really a loyal person to a piece of land? Because real religion transcends all these barriers and land, and their only real loyalty should be to God or the religion. I was wondering if we can talk about that a little bit from a general perspective.
I'm not sure I understand the question.
No, his point was that the perception is available, that for a religious person, the primary loyalty will always be to God and therefore transcend loyalty to a piece of land.
Yeah. Imad, a good question, and perhaps a theologian should respond to that, but I'll try.
Maybe a Virginian should.
I know what the Virginians answer. Let me do an analogy with the Chassidim, the ultra-orthodox Jews of Israel, because they certainly feel that way. Their loyalty is to God, not to, not to the Zionist state of Israel, which they regard as a temporal authority, but yes, to the land of Israel, because the land was given supposedly by God to the Jewish people. So it transcends. Their loyalty to God has primacy over everything. Well, it's very nice until you have others who don't share that belief, and you're trying to bring humans together to create some kind of a civil society, and you just, you cannot do it, because it goes back to what I said earlier regarding competing ideologies and instability, particularly in the United States. There has to be some universality, something that would avoid chaos throughout the world, and that would certainly do it. Now, having said that, don't you like that phrase, "having said that"? That does not make insignificant one's loyalty to God or to his faith, clearly. And I, and I don't think that they both compete with one another. I mean, as a Jew, I have a loyalty to God, I have a commitment, I have a commandment, although at times I wish he would choose somebody else, but nevertheless, that's what I have. But in terms of application of law, legal principles, how I should conduct myself in the civil society, my loyalty has to be to my country and its system of jurisprudence. And as I said, I don't think, at least in the United States, I don't think they conflict with one another.
Aziza, could you comment briefly? We have but 10 minutes left.
Yeah, a quick answer. You know, this view that if I'm very religious, then I'm sort of abstracted away from the world around me, and I just concentrate on God, and I don't take care of my family or my community or my country, I don't think that's a proper understanding within the Islamic context. For example, you know, the Prophet said, "Act for this life as if you're living forever, and act for the afterlife as if you're dying tomorrow." So you have to balance your lives. Also, we have, this is where you bring other aspects of the Quran and the Hadith to understand the answer. What about the relationship of the womb that is so important in Islam, that you have to honor your family, honor your mother, your brothers, your sisters, et cetera? What about even the neighbor, who is so important in Islam that you have to take care of them and worry about them and serve them? And then what about the community you're living in? So if you think that your religion allows you to abstract from all of that, sort of dump them and be a spiritualist that, who can sacrifice all these people for spirituality, I think that's very much the wrong understanding of Islam.
Well, I don't think we can do any more questions. If my colleagues and I have final comments, let us at this time offer them, and then perhaps, Aziza, you could close out the evening. I have a very brief thought to offer, and that is, I think one of the most useful parts of the discussion this evening was, ma'am, that which you brought forward, because it brought forth, you know, really what there is in the way of differences of perception. And it probably touched on some of the perceptions that have been at the root of legislation, among other things. And it was useful, I believe, to look at texts of those laws and perceptions about those texts. It led me to reflect that there are really kind of two issues, among others, we're working with. One is that there are disagreements in and among adherents to a religion. The word jihad figured in the preambular language of that statute before it was amended, and though I am not an expert on Islam or on the term jihad, I know enough to know that it is very variously interpreted. There are adherents of the view that it amounts basically to proselytism and is nonviolent. There are adherents to the view that it is indeed a species, or should be a species of violent war. But law must not presume to adjudicate those differences of view. Law must not presume to adjudicate differences of view among adherents. Law must proscribe crime. The other side of this is that religion should not presume vile law to adjudicate cultural differences. Religion should not grasp law as an instrument for the imposition of cultural conformity along the lines that religious adherents might prefer. And that really is kind of a paradigm for the religious liberty that I think we've been discussing this evening. And it, in my view, would not be possible to constrain voluntary regimes of religious behavior consistent with law and statute within the framework I've just laid out. So I hope we came to those conclusions, among others. Tommy, did you have?
Just two thoughts. One is that I find it interesting that one word has not been used this evening by anyone, and frankly, I'm gratified by it. And that word is tolerance, that we should all have more tolerance. Well, the Constitution and the Bill of Rights and the Virginia Statute of Religious Freedom, all, don't speak of tolerance, we don't tolerate. We welcome, we're a diverse country, and we try to achieve mutual understanding and respect. That's the first thought. Second thought is, as I was listening to what everyone was saying, and what some were saying, and how Aziza was attempting to defend Islam by the written word of the Quran, how easily, maybe not easily, it takes time, but I'll say how easily, a religion can be distorted to create evil and human catastrophe. And it is for that reason that we all have a responsibility to be eternally vigilant about attacks upon our own religion and other religions as well. about attacks upon our own religion and other religions as well, because we are all in Ambassador Bell's salad bowl together. That's where we have to live peacefully.
Well, we're coming to the end of this discussion, and it's been pretty civil, thank you all. But I feel like I'm attending a courtship, and everybody is timid and shy and is trying to put their best foot forward, and we haven't really had the deep discussion we need to have yet, but it's a beginning. As Ambassador Bell pointed out, there have been some hard questions put forward, and we probably did not follow them to the end. There was, this was not the place for extensive discussion, person to person, but it's a good beginning, and we can continue that. I don't want this town hall meeting to be an assignment, we came, we did it, and we left. I'd like it to be the beginning of a conversation where, look around you in your neighborhood in this group, at people that you might actually ask difficult questions from, and try to understand each other's better, because I think part of the problem in conflict resolution terms is fear, mistrust, you know, like, am I, you know, who is this person that is telling me these things? Can I ask the question that I really in my heart want to ask? Am I in danger? The gentleman who asked about bin Laden, I mean, you know, what do I have to do with bin Laden? What do you have to do with the guy who blew up the building in Oklahoma? He was a Christian, you know, I, I don't think, you know, if I ask you now, was he an apostate, what would you say? I mean, this idea of guilt by association or collective guilt, we need to get rid of that. I'm an American, I'm here with you, I believe in the same constitution you believe in, and I live the life you live. We have a lot more in common than I do have with a lot of other people. And let's put our hands together to build a strong country with diversity and to develop a really good model, a shining model, for other places in the world. And I think, you know, and I do hope that that would be the message we take from this town hall meeting tonight. Thank you.
Thank you all.